Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to -- good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of February 25th, 2013 at 7:02. So our first order of business is to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, but since I wrote them, I don't think I should.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item three is Student Communications.
Hello again, my name is Steven Dings, and this is Mike, and this is Student Communications. So for, I would like to start off with Student Council. So the past few weeks, we did an auction for parking, for a parking spot in Close, and that was won by Tommy Bennett, and then we'll have another parking space this month for our, for Raffle. We also, over the break, competed, participated in the Polar Plunge, which is a fundraiser for the Special Olympics, and it's a, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it this year, but I normally participated in it. It's a great opportunity for the kids to get, to participate as a team and walk together in this, in a parade, in a theme parade, and then run, run into the water, the freezing water of the, of Nantasket, and, or they can not participate and be what's known as chickens, and it's just an all-around a great experience. We also, there will also be a staff breakfast on the 28th of this month, and the next DUCO meeting is this Friday, so, and then there'll be another update for you guys after that. So Mike will talk, and Mike will talk now, talk about sports.
So for sports, the boys' basketball team right now is 11 and 4, and the girls' basketball team is 3 and 7. And for boys' hockey, they're 8 and 4 with one tie also, and the girls' hockey, 7, 3, and 2. Boys' swimming team is 4, 4 and 0, and the girls and boys swim together, so the girls' team is also 4, 4 and 0. And the boys' wrestling team right now is 6, 1 and 0. And track, the track team won their state championship on, a few Thursdays ago, and the Patriot League meet was canceled due to the blizzard.
And also, the ski team will have a, have a race tomorrow. Today, they, a lot of them wore their GS suits, which are, a lot of the girls, not the guys, which are, it's basically just body spandex, but they only, they only wore the bottom part, but they, we wish them the best of luck. And also, the debate team will have a meet this Wednesday in Situate, which should have been two weeks ago, but was canceled due to the storm because Situate didn't have power. Then in their school, the high school is being used as a shelter, so, thank you, and that's all.
Did the, the boys win their conference, right, today?
The?
Basketball.
Basketball?
First Patriot League ever.
Yeah.
Playing it Thursday night at Hingham High, correct?
Yes.
The boys' hockey are playing a play-in game up at?
Currently.
Stonem.
Right now.
Supposedly winning as of right around the period, period, so keep your fingers crossed.
Oh, good.
Good.
And I was at the Polar Plunge at Nantasket. It was freezing, and I was very proud of all the Hingham High School kids that participated.
It's, it's so much fun. Did Emily participate?
Emily went in, I was the official towel holder.
Oh, nice.
And, but there was quite a few, quite a few kids that went in.
I remember the first year I did it, I didn't know that you had to run with shoes, so I brought a brand-new pair of shoes, and I had to run right in the water with it, and I lost, I lost one of the shoes.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it was so, so, but it's, it's funny, you run in, and then the, as soon as the water hits your legs, you go, no. It's not that bad.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions?
No problem.
All right, that's great.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Item four is Communications. We have no communication, great, no communications. Five are questions and comments from the audience, if we have any.
I did not receive them.
All right. Moving right along to new business, then. 6.1 is to take action on an operating budget to be adopted by the school committee for fiscal year '14. Dr. Gallow, do you want to give a quick update on forecasting?
I will, because things have been changing quickly. Wait just a minute, okay. In the world of budget, and I've been trying to keep you up to date, but we made another change as of, what, 5:30 this afternoon, John and I, so what you have today isn't even what you would have had this morning, or what you got by email over the weekend, so...
So do we have updated figures at our table?
Yes, the packet that you have has the updated figures. So today, of course, is the day when you will hopefully be able to act on a budget that will become your budget, adopt a budget. So tonight, we have for you revised operating and capital budget proposals for your review, consideration, and possible adoptions. So this slide is a little bit harder to see, but I think in the audience, you all have a copy of it. In the past, we've, we've shown this, and I've always said, moved on quickly because the print was small, but it really is important to know all of the columns that are here. So you have the account number on the left, and then the account title, and then the FY-1213 budget, and that's the year that we're in, of course. And then our original budget is the third column, the fourth column, the original budget that was proposed in December, and of course, we've made multiple changes to that, but that is where we started. And then, in the column that says adjustment, and this is actually an adjustment of February 25th, right, John?
Right, yep. Yeah, those, those headers are...
That's as of today, so that heading, we will change. And then what the new budget is, the proposed budget with the adjustment, and finally, the increase or decrease, and, and increase or decrease from the original budget. And the parenthesis, of course, indicate that it was a, and, and what a decrease, so the parenthesis indicated we really had to, it's a negative decrease, which is an increase, and that's why the parentheses are there. So that budget for regular education, as of today, at 5:30, stands at 31,445,378, and that is a 5.09 percent increase. And then the green budget here is the rate, special education budget. It has not changed since the last time we met on February 11th, and, and so it stands at $10,410,115. We made two reductions early on in that budget, and so that is a actual decrease from the year that we're in, just a little less than 1 percent decrease from the year that we're And then the vocational budget is a negative as well, and that's because, as you know, we have one fewer student projected for next year. So the total at the bottom, in the black print, is where we, where we are as of today, after the one additional retirement that we took at 5:00 this afternoon. So the total budget that is being proposed, 41,993,784, and that's a 3.5 percent increase Looking at it a little bit differently, and perhaps more easily read, this was our original increase in December, and I'm not going to show you all the iterations of the changes from then, but then it was up 4.93 percent from the current year, and you can see the increases in the regular education, the special education, and vocational. We made some other changes in meetings in January, but when we last met, the increase was a 3.94 percent, because we had taken a number of reductions, and most of those were in the area personnel, either retirements, or people who are currently on leave, and have indicated that either they will not be back at all, or that they would like to continue their leave, extend it for another year. And so that was a savings that night of $59,289 additional, and so those are the figures, 3.94 percent then. And then tonight, since February 11th, we have actually reduced the budget by $171,643, and again, those are all personnel changes, so we haven't cut anything out of the budget, but we have been able to reduce the bottom line because of those kinds of personnel changes, a few retirements, and some other personnel adjustments such as, such as leaves. So 3.52 is where we are, and, and you can see all the other numbers. Now, you will all recall, of course, that when we presented our budget, the needs-based budget, we had a number of new initiatives, and at the time, we categorized them in four separate categories. We had enrollment-related ones, we had what we called restorations of needed services or programs was a category, unique kinds of other needs were in there, and then there was a category that was in terms of improvements or enhancements to the budget. So that was how we categorized all of those items, and I do believe that I said at the time that some of the items there could have been in one, in more than one category, could have been even in two or three categories. And it could, for example, be something that reflected enrollment, but also represented another unique kind of need that we had. So for tonight, what we have done is to reshuffle, if you will, all of those requests into those that we believe are, in addition to the category that they're in, are also in what would be, have been a level services budget, had we presented the budget that way. And then, another category of new programs, new initiatives, that would not have been considered level services, but nevertheless, are things that we believe in, and that we believe that we need. So we hope that this will give you a different way of looking at the overall, the overall budget. So here are the new initiatives, from the four charts before, into two charts. And the first one is the chart that indicates those items that we think could be considered level services, as well as whatever other category we called them at the time. And they reflect enrollment, include, affect on enrollment. So of course, there's the elementary classroom teacher there, and I know you've heard me say many times in many years that we actually make the decision as to where we're going to allocate our staff in early May. By then, we know the kindergarten enrollment, we have some sense of the number of children bumping up from kindergarten to grade one, and of those, some young children that are new to our district, having gone to a private school, so we know that. We have a pretty good sense of families that are moving to or from Hingham, or families that may be sending a child to private school. And so we think we have as much information as we're going to get, prior to the end of school, anyway, on April, on May 1st. And the first week in May, Ellen and I meet with the elementary principals, and then we also meet with the secondary department directors, and resource teachers, and with the two principals, and make assignments there. And we allocate the staffing, whatever it is that we have, to the places where there tend to be the biggest problems. If I were making that assignment today, of that 1.0 teacher, it would likely be at South School, because that's where we have the largest enrollments, and that's where we have a concern about what's going to happen in that K-1 bump up. So that's where that staff person would be today, and that may be where that staff person would be when we get to May 1st, but that remains to be seen. The 4.0, 7 through 12 teachers, is a combination for the middle school and the high school, and these are teachers that are in core subjects and electives. We have, the last several years, when we've added, the very few FTEs that we've added, the last several years, we have mainly focused on the core subjects, but of course, you all know that high school students tend to take five core subjects, but then, in order to meet distribution requirements, and to earn sufficient credits for graduation and so on, they also need to take electives. So over the last seven years, we have not added to the electives. So this will not be four people. This will be the equivalent of four full-time teaching, FTEs, we call them, full-time teachers. So it might be two-tenths of a person that's going to one department, and maybe four-tenths of a person that's going to another department, and so on. And so that's the reason we say 4.0 FTEs, but it does not really reflect four individual teachers. The additional bus and driver certainly reflects enrollment. We have some enrollment issues, particularly with the growth of the middle school, and the fact that all 19 of our big buses need to be there at the middle school to drop youngsters off, and need to be there in the afternoon, and as well, need a late bus home on, on certain nights of the week. And we are also responsible for transportation for private schools in town, for Hingham children that attend those, and for us, that the biggest obligation there would be to St. Paul's, and of course, those routes have to travel all over the town, so it takes separate buses to do those routes, because they need to go from one end of Hingham, from Crow Point, to the far end of South Hingham. The assistant cross-country and sailing coaches, they are there because of the growth or size of the enrollment in those two sports. And for safety and other reasons, we need additional help in those two, those two sports, that's why those are there. And then Plymouth River, while we had this under restoration, because Plymouth River once did have four special education teachers, the reality is that we need that position because we have an increased number of student IEPs at that building, and in fact, I think I did show you a chart with the children with special needs in every one of the buildings, and Plymouth River is not the lowest enrollment, and so they do need that in order to keep pace with that enrollment. Some of the other things that we think belong in the level services budget are the central office support. With the number of mandates that we have, and the demands that we have, we simply aren't able to keep up here. We need someone, we're asking for a halftime position for a person that can be here from roughly 4 to 7, help us to get ready for the meetings that occur almost every night of the week, and then also, someone that can bring skills such as PowerPoint, Excel, and those kinds of things. The high school health aide increase, this is not a new role, we have a health aide at the high school, working 20 hours a week, but the reality is, in a building with over 1,100 students, one person in that health office in that large, sprawling building is simply not sufficient for the number of students that have chronic health issues, that may have medication issues. We need coverage when the nurse is called out of her office to another part of the building, and so on. So we believe that increase relates to need in order to be able to continue to function the way we function this year, and in fact, of course, that is how we've defined level services. The sixth tenths math director, we also think is level services, because it's fully funding an existing service. We have a full FTE now, in the, in the person of Doug Hawley. We have additional $3,000 for a person who is also working as the resource teacher for that department, and next year, Doug will not be working with us in that role. And so we have the service, but because Doug is retired, and therefore cannot earn as much as he could if he were employed only for this particular role, we have been having a financial benefit of having a full-time role, but not having to pay full-time dollars for it, and now we have to pay the piper, so to speak, so that the person who will become the director will have a full salary. So it's not a new, a brand-new service, it's something that we need to continue what we're doing now. Language lab, we've added over the years, the num, to the core curriculum, and foreign language is one of the core curriculum courses. So as we add sections, single classes even, of foreign language at the high school, all of those classes need to be scheduled during each week into that language lab, and we can't do it with the existing aid time that we have, so looking for five additional hours a week in our program, not a new service, but does reflect increased students and increased classes. And you will remember from one of the other slides, that as enrollments have grown, you know that we've come back to time and time and asked for personnel, and whether that be additional pairs, or additional teachers, we have added personnel. But we almost never add anything having to do with equipment, or supplies, or additional maintenance to keep things running, and that simply is a reality, that we haven't been able to do that. So of the $27,000 that was on one of the slides for new initiatives for support in this area, we felt that at least $12,000, I picked $12,000, but at least $12,000 of it can be justified by increasing enrollment. In fact, those areas, whether it's copier replacement, or maintenance of equipment, or purchasing equipment, specialized equipment for departments and elementary schools, and so on, those are things that we actually have cut over the years, they haven't kept pace with, with the enrollment growth. So the total, then, of the new initiatives that we had proposed, that were formally divided into four categories, the total is $488,820. And then, looking at the other initiatives, new initiatives, which reflect new needs, or proposed programs that are going to enhance what we have, there are, of course, the middle school librarian and technology specialist, which we've been talking about for several years now. Every elementary school has a full-time librarian, high school has one and a half, the middle school has a half librarian, just not acceptable, but didn't really fall into the category that was the level services category. Similarly, with the technology specialist. Every one of our other schools has technology specialist help. The elementary schools have full-time tech specialists, the middle school has none designated. So that is here, even though I certainly could make a case that it's one of our greatest needs. The two elementary assistant principals, again, we've made, I think, a very good case for why we need those folks. I've said many times, this was one of the worst decisions that I've ever had to make, I won't say I made it, oh, I did make it willingly, but I won't say I made it happily. And so that's something we need badly restored. It didn't fit the definition of level services, so it wasn't appropriate for that list, but those top three things on that list are my highest priorities, in reality, my personal highest priorities, although everything here is something we need. The custodial supervision and maintenance support, again, we simply need more help to do what we do. We've cut back on custodials, we can't, custodians, we can't continue to maintain the building. The list gets longer and longer and longer of things that people need done. And so that isn't, it's a new initiative, it is not appropriate for level services, but if we want to provide clean buildings, and buildings in the same condition they've been in, then we have to have more help to do that. And the college summer helpers are another example of that. And the 25 hours for the post, for the secondary, high school post-secondary planning support center, that is something we had years ago, so we put it under restoring needed services, but it doesn't fit the category of level services, so it was not there. Transition room tutor, wonderful program, it exists now, but it's funded this year by the foundation. And I think some people would say, well, just because you had it and funded it somewhere else, doesn't mean that we need to continue to fund it. That's why it's here, as, as opposed to being under level services, even though it's a service that we have this year. Title IX clerical support, that's to help with the report that we got in, in the fall. It indicates that we need to do some reporting, regular reporting, and a survey, and reporting data every year to the federal government, the Federal Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, and so we put some dollars to help the generation of those reports. Dance team, that's associated with the Title IX report. Dance team attracts a very large number of our young women, and it's a very successful program, and they work hard at it, and we need additional coaching there. We have one person, a large number of kids, so that's there. Global citizenship program is a program, again, that we have this year. It's being funded by the HEF, and also supported largely by the volunteerism of staff. So it's a new initiative, we have it, but in terms of how we might define level services, it's one of those that, you know, if I say it's level services, then people say, well, but that's only because you've got grant funding for it. So we put it here. Similarly, freshman advisory program, something that we're pushing because of New England Association accreditation program, it's been supported, as it's been developed, by volunteer teachers, which is a great thing, and something we want to support, but again, it didn't meet the criterion for level services. And then here's the other $15,000 of the $27,000 that we originally put in the form of categorization. So if you add all of those things up in categories we felt we couldn't support as level services items, you get 432,297.
Could we just take a break? Whoever, if you just joined us, thank you for joining us. If you could sign in, that would be great. Thank you.
So if we then take another look at the budget, same numbers as on the slides that we started with, at least same numbers for February 25th. We're still at, having reduced it today, over the past two weeks, by 171,643. If you look at the combined, it's still on the former slide, 3.52 percent of increase. But if you then break it into a level services budget, which is everything except the 432,297, we couldn't categorize as level services, then that budget would be up 2.45 percent from FY-13. And those other needs and initiatives that were on the last two slides are up 1.07 percent from FY-13, and the total of those two is the 3.52 percent where it is. So the total proposed operating budget, 41,993,784, as of late this afternoon. So we probably should act on these, or discuss these separately, Carol, the ones that are operating versus the capital slide, so...
Sure, yeah. So we have the operating budget before us. We also intended to put everything into perspective forecasting this meeting, this morning, and this budget that that's presented, I think the bottom line is, it fits perfectly into what's forecasted for the town. We have a balanced budget at this minute for the town, with this budget as presented. I have, I didn't bring copies of everybody, for, for everybody on the forecasting, but we can certainly share that with you, it's a public document.
I do have a slide for capital, but I thought you might want to discuss just the operating budget for us, and say a separate vote.
Right, right. Okay.
So Carol?
Yes.
So just, I'm just wondering, when that was in balance, as, before the additional $50,000 were roughly, that was announced earlier tonight, right?
The, the 5:30 change, yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep. So Ted isn't even aware of this, 0.4 percent, 0.04 percent reduction at this point. The changes for the forecast basically were to new growth. We had a slight increase to new growth. Level, we left state aid, federal, state aid is level. He talked with Garrett Bradley in regard to, remember, there is a line item in the governor's budget for $25 per student, which for Hingham would translate to about $100,000. It goes to our Chapter 78. That is not currently budgeted in the forecast, so it could get even rosier. There are several changes to the local receipts numbers. Basically, car excise taxes are increasing, well, so motor vehicle excise is increasing, investment income is increasing, payments in lieu of taxes, and a slight increase in departmental, in local receipts. So I think the budget that we have before us, it is fair, it represents what we need to put forth to the town to meet the needs of our students, and that's, you know, basically my comments on the operating budget. Ray, do you have any comments on the operating?
I have several.
Okay.
So our approach beginning in September was needs-based, rather than looking at available revenue, and this was a break from tradition, I realize, and we've said this many times. That's why we've not referred to the budget all along as a level services budget, or something approaching level services, because many of us believe, or at least I believe, that the school budget should be viewed differently than the other departmental budgets, and there are reasons for that. We have over 600 employees, 10 buildings we're responsible for, and over 4,200 kids. No other department can come close to that responsibility. No other department can come close to that responsibility. When we define level services, we now allow increases due to enrollment growth. A few years ago, that wasn't true. So, when we talk about level services and the definition that changes, it changes over time, so it could certainly change over time as well. The school committee, and this is something I forget sometimes because we don't always focus on it, but the school committee is, I believe, the only autonomous elected board with statutory responsibility for its own budget, and I think a lot of people forget about that. When we talk about education, like many of you at home, we expect a lot from our students. The Board of Selectmen has recently put particular focus on results, and we've shown them what tremendous results a great education in Hingham can bring. But if you want positive results in education, we must continue to provide the tools and opportunities for our students to succeed, and that means teachers, technology, new courses, and challenges. Education in this Commonwealth and the entire country indeed is evolving. We have mandated changes to curriculum. We have technological developments, higher education demands, that we prepare our kids today to be tomorrow's adults, leaders, and positive contributors to our global economy. We must have the resources to get them ready, plain and simple. Our review of this budget was measured and thoughtful. It's been months now. We tried to incorporate balance of needs with the town's ability to sustain the cost of providing necessary services to properly equip our kids. The town is well-positioned, as Carol just said, financially, prudent fiscal policy by our leaders, advisory committee, selectmen, this board. Over the years, and sound decisions have set us apart from other towns and enable us to make the investment in our future this budget represents, and that's what this is, an investment in our future. Restoration of particular positions is vital to our ability to succeed in providing the best education possible for our kids. We've worked hard to ensure that the cost of such an education is fair, reasonable, and in my view, sustainable, given the current future financial outlook for the town. This budget accomplishes two goals. It meets the needs of our educators and students at an affordable cost, and does not negatively impact any other departmental budget, is affordable under conservatively projected revenues, and still enables the town to maintain its conservative approach to financial policy, and I would urge you all to support it.
Thanks, Ray.
You're welcome.
I'll just add a few things that haven't been said. I don't want to be redundant here. I also, like Ray, was kind of focusing on the beginning of this journey back in September, and when we decided to focus on a needs-based budget. And for me, a lot of the incentive for that was what I think Dr. Gallo has characterized as a backlog of unmet needs and unfunded mandates that were starting to have a real impact on the personnel and on the quality of the product that we deliver. So, recognizing that the town had regained its financial footing in the absolute worst of financial times that we've had in the past 50 years, and we're now meeting our guidelines established for fund balance, I think we decided to take a different approach to how we could look at this budget. So, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Dr. Gallo, who I know, and John Ferris has changed this budget a million times, and to Liz and to Ellen for their input. I think this is a budget that's within Hingham's reach, and I think it's the right thing to do for our kids. Thank you.
Thanks. Andy, you have any comments?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens of Hingham for supporting us in so many ways. I don't necessarily always feel that we deserve more because of the school budget, but I always view it more in this light, that people's property values and what the sense of joy they get out of living in town, a lot is attributed to their school system because so much, people spend so much time and emphasis on watching their kids grow. So, I do support education. I do support all the town initiatives, and I love working with all the other boards. When it comes to this budget, you know, you live within proposition, you try to live within Proposition 2 and 1/2, and if you actually back out our level services, new initiatives, and our other new needs and initiatives, the budget's up 1.5%. And I think that's a great, that's a great attribute, you know, attribute that to Dr. Gallo and her staff. There's over 4,200 students in our school system. They all learn differently. They all have different needs, and I think by trying to keep this budget within reason and all the things that we're adding to help with our growth in this thriving community are, again, a reflection of our management and the community we live in. So, again, I support this budget, and I also thank the people from Hingham for being so generous and thoughtful and committed to our community.
Dr. Schreier?
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for the people who have worked on this budget and the time that has gone in time and time again. My concern is and continues to be the one FTE for the elementary level. My concern is that if that one teacher is dedicated to South, that will certainly help with the grade one cohort, but my concern is that I don't feel that that's enough. Two years ago, i.e., 2010 to 2011, we had a K to 1 bump of 55. This past year, 11 to 12, we had a K to 1 bump of 65. And as I look at the sections of K, it seems to me that East with four sections can absorb kids, and I'm concerned about the other three. So, my only comment is a thank you. I support the budget, but I would like to see a second elementary FTE, a second FTE dedicated to the elementary level.
So, I just want to clarify, if you're trying to make a change to the budget, you would-
Apparently, I am.
You would have to-
Make a motion?
Yep.
Do you want to make that or do you want to have it go through the rest of the people?
All right, let's, let's finish. Mr. Friedman?
Yes. So, I'm pleased to hear that the latest forecast shows that this is affordable for the town. As, I know all of you know, but everybody here and on TV land may not know, I spent the last six years on advisory, so I'm very familiar with the numbers, and, you know, I realize that, you know, we hit, in terms of our fund balance, which is a very big concern for the town, we got to a low of just over $7 million. It may sound like a lot of money, but it had dropped from almost $10 million in 2003. Over the last four fiscal years, it's gone from $7 million to 18 million, over 18 million. Now, some of that is restricted, it has to be used for particular purposes, has to do with bond refinancing and so forth, but it's been roughly an increase of $7 to $8 million, which shows, I think, a tremendous amount of fiscal strength for the town and really reflects the fact that we've really taken out of a lot of structural problems in the, in the budget that were there five or six years ago, as our fund balance was starting, was coming down. In addition to that, when, and Carol referred to this five-year forecast, and I don't have the latest one, but my guess is that the latest one also shows in the next, the other, the next four years, a very, very positive picture. In fact, we're showing surpluses going out for the next four years, where for the last six years, we've always showed somewhere between a $1 and $2 million deficit every year looking out. So, again, like they say in the stock market, the current performance is no guarantee of future performance, but it leads me to believe, since we do budget in a very conservative way on the revenue side, that I'm optimistic that we will continue to have favorable, favorable trends going forward and that this, this level will be sustainable, because I think it's important to recognize that there are other areas that we need to add back in if we want to take the level, the services that we provide to Hingham students to the level they were at even four or five years ago. And that's not to say that just because it was there before, it needs to be there again, but I do believe it's something we have to look long and hard at to see if there are other areas, because one other thing that's important to note is, if you look at the communities we benchmark against, benchmark just mean compare ourselves against, the last time we did that, of the 20 communities we benchmarked against in terms of spenders per pupil, we ranked about 17th or 18th in the low end. So, there were 17, 16 or 17 towns that we benchmarked against that spent more per pupil. If you look at when the Boston Magazine ranked the high schools this past fall, and Hingham High School was ranked number 32 out of the 50 best high schools in the Commonwealth, there were only seven high schools on that entire list that spent less dollars per pupil than Hingham did. And I don't mean to say that that in and of itself means we should spend more, but I think it is a reflection that we do, in a very frugal way, in a very cost-effective way, provide the services that we do, that we provide today. So, when you, when you go, when you look at the past five or six years, when each year we've been doing level services or in some cases even level funding, if you're already at a relatively low cost-effective level, and then it kind of perpetuates itself. So, when you say, "Okay, we need to do this," or "We need to look at that," you know, it, and you may be looking at a percentage increase that is higher than perhaps some departments or what we looked at in the past, you have to look at in the context of where we started from. And again, that's the purpose of benchmarking and looking at those comparisons. So, I'm pleased that it looks like this level of budgeting will work well. I'm optimistic that it will continue to allow us in the future to, to provide the level of services that I think the people of Hingham want and that our students deserve.
Okay, great. Paul, I don't know how much left there is to say. I'm sorry. I let you go first last time.
And I won't repeat and I won't be redundant about things, but I will say one thing. It's been a very interesting journey, and it's been rewarding for me. It's not without, you know, wishes and hopes that other things could be in the budget, but I will say that a unique perspective that I, this is my first budget. A year ago, I was just like any other taxpayer, any other parent with children in the school system, not knowing nearly enough, and that's my own fault at the time, of all the time and the effort and the dedication that goes into these budgets, and it's not just Chair, who's done a fantastic job, and my fellow members, who I've only grown in respect for in terms of their thought and their contributions, but the administration, Todd, John, Ellen, and the principals and the staff, it's just unbelievable. But it really doesn't stop there either. I always kind of, you know, watched the advisory committee and wasn't quite sure, you know, I knew they were very important, but I wasn't quite sure of all that they did, but not only do they, they talk the talk, they walk the walk. The people that are on the subcommittee, the people in the advisory, they're here all the time at every meeting, and they do a great job, and it is a cooperative effort, and nobody makes decisions on their own, and that's what maybe makes this town such a strong entity, because it's, we all work together. And I saw that firsthand this year, and I was wondering whether I would see it because I didn't know. But it's something, you know, I have to look forward to in future budgets, working with the members here, and I just want the people in the town to know that, that the time and effort that is put in by the people that are, that contributed to this budget is immeasurable, and, you know, I thank them for all their efforts.
Okay, thank you. I think at this point, we'll open it up. Does anybody have any questions from the audience? And if you do, you need to come up to the podium, state your name, address, and your
Sorry, I'm new at these meetings, and this is just a, perhaps a clarification question. Mr. Schreier, when you were mentioning that one FTE isn't enough for you-
Could you start with your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Carrie O'Neill, South School parent. With a reference to being one, full-time, and one FTE not being enough, and two, I'm just curious, does that mean that one is within the budget, being definitely dedicated to South currently, and there's a possibility for another one? Or do we know that if we have one FTE, do we know where that's going?
I think actually Dr. Gallo should answer that question. You want to?
Yes, I think I did speak to it earlier. We make all of the decisions about our staffing the first week in May, when we have all of the most recent information about enrollments. So, I think what I said was, if I were making the decision today with the enrollment numbers that we have today, it would go to South. That's assuming that we have that same bump up from K to 1. It would, it would go to South. But a lot of things can happen between now and then. Here's one example of something that we're wrestling with right now. Right now, we have one of our three extended-day kindergarten classes at South. We haven't made the decision yet and will within the next two weeks about whether that class would be at South again, or whether that class might be at Plymouth River, where it was before South, or whether it might be back at Foster. That decision really depends upon where the children live, who would be populating that class, the children with special needs. So, there's an example of a decision that hasn't yet been made, and so, things like that could change. So, if this vote, if this budget is voted as it is recommended, there is one for elementary, and where it will be definitely happens in May.
Okay. Any other questions? If you just walked in, if you don't mind signing in, that would be great.
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the administration's recommended total operating budget for fiscal 2014 in the amount of $41,993,784.
May I have a second?
Second.
Dennis? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Comment? Go ahead. Now's your chance.
Are we having comments?
Well, then you make a modify.
You make an amendment.
I would like to make an amended motion. I would move to add a second 1.0 K to 1 teacher, total of 2, reflecting both anticipated growth and current enrollment.
I'll second that till we can have discussion.
Could I just say that if you restrict it to simply K to 1, and for some reason we didn't get the bump up this year, then we would not be able to use it at another grade, where there might be a bigger-
Let me change it. Let me then make a motion for a second 1.0 equivalent K to 5 teacher, reflecting both anticipated growth and current enrollment.
I would comment that if that is the recommendation, then it would come under the other needs category, needs and initiatives, which is fine, just letting you know where it would, where it would appear. And typically, we would list such a vacancy as master's step 3 or step 4. So, a master's step 4 would be 53806. So, Dr. Schreier's motion would be then to increase the budget by 53806 for a total of 42,047,590. That would be the effect of the amendment.
Comments and questions from the committee? Dennis?
So, a question I have, so the retirement reduction that just happened today-
Was about $19,000, almost $20,000. So, then, that $20,000 against the 53806 would mean, mean that the town-wide budget, as we see it forecast, not voted, obviously, would be in a deficit of about $33,000.
Yeah, so it'd be about a $33,000 change from what was more, was expected, expected earlier today.
Can I ask a question of Dr. Gallo?
Sure.
So, Dr. Gallo, I've been on the committee, I guess, a few years here. You've always had the list of restoring, your wish list, meeting the needs. Walk me through or remind, it seems like you've taken, let me make it clear. I love the fact that Dr. Schreier is actively advocating for our children, especially at their early ages, but by the same token, we're well down the process. You spend a lot of time on this, so could you just walk me through why you made that decision just to go for one instead of the second?
Yes. Let me actually show you the original slides that had the original enrollment. I won't go through the whole PowerPoint, obviously, but we had some enrollment charts. This is the one that shows the bump up from grade K to 1 that was indicated earlier on. Here are the current enrollments for every grade and, and every class. And so, if we look at the bump up that we anticipate for next year, and it's a modest bump up that we anticipate for next year, it's 20, it's actually down 23 students overall. Now, 23- 23 students, K to five, if they were all in one grade, you might say, well, gosh, we could reduce a section. If 23 are across four schools and five grades, maybe there's only one or two in each class, and, and that wouldn't have the impact of our being able to introduce. But we know from last year, it was really difficult, despite my valiant efforts, to try to convince people that you really have to look at classes moving along as well as just the total number of students. So as I looked at the chart, that, this chart, and I look at the number of classes moving into a building and the number moving out for every one of the buildings, it was hard for me to justify either based on the 23-student increase, or on looking at it in a class-by-class model to put in two, even though I could make many arguments for saying it would enhance class sizes somewhere in one of these grade levels. But if I looked at both of those things, the fact that we anticipate 23 or 24 students additional, and moving classes from one to two and three to four and so on, and not having to collapse classes anywhere along the way, it was just hard for me to make that recommendation. It's not that I don't appreciate smaller class sizes. I do, and there are certainly a lot of places here. If our goal were simply to reduce class size, then, but you can find several places here where there are sizes of 24 and 25 where we could add a, a teacher. So given the many other competing priorities for this year, the effort that we need to make to put in some other things, we focused the last couple of years on class size at elementary and secondary, so it was hard for me to justify that.
And then for clarification, because you said increase of 23, it's a decrease of 23.
I'm sorry, decrease of 23.
And then also, do you have that chart handy of where you showed the services that were being dedicated to elementary school, middle school, and high school? Because I think you showed, you had-
Yes, I do.
-parity across levels.
I do. And as a matter of fact, that's in another presentation, but maybe the joint meeting? No. This one is in. The chart that Andy is mentioning is really one where I tried to look at the total new initiatives and see where they fell. So this graph shows you where the dollars for those initiatives fall. The blue being the elementary dollars, that 32.9% of what we're putting in the budget is for elementary. And then the middle school is the pink color, high school is the green, so the middle school 22%, the green 20.4%. And then district-wide things, like the bus, for example, would be a district-wide thing, custodial position. That, I thought that was a fairly good balance. I think one of the things you have to look at is not just what is in this budget, but what already is. And at the elementary level, we have a librarian in every school. We don't have a full-time librarian at the middle school. We have a tech specialist at each of the four schools. We have a middle school with 972 youngsters, and we don't have any tech specialists. So I also tried to look at it in terms of where we are relative to equity across the district. So I think we could make a good case for making the additions we made this year at the secondary level, because we had done other things at the elementary. Also, in the list of the new initiatives, there are a long list of things at the high school particularly, but many of them are stipends for things. $6,000 for stipends for a particular program for pay teachers after school, and so the dollars don't, don't add up.
Could you go back? I think I, as you were sliding through, on the justified needs, but not in the proposed budget?
Oh, yes. That's a good point.
So on there, I'm looking, you actually have a 1.0 elementary-
We did. Two were, two, right, two were considered.
And how does that compare? I, I don't want to say compare, it's probably not the right choice, but I'm looking at, I know you've talked a lot about the restoration of the elementary and middle school adjustment counselors. I mean, that's also an important need.
Mm-hmm. That's a high priority. And it just didn't make the cut. Again, we made a long list. The principals and directors advocate well for their programs. We gave you some of the backup that they wrote for different things.
Right.
So that the things that are on this list, but are not in the budget, are all important. And they're all things that definitely are important, will enhance our program, will do things like reduce class sizes, will restore more of the things that we've lost that we still need, and so on. So none of them, at this point, is in the budget, but they're all important.
This list here, is this, is this the way it's presented anyway, prioritized from your perspective?
No. These, I, well, I, I didn't write it that way. I do think that the adjustment counselors are a high priority for everyone. And I think that they are a high priority, particularly at the elementary, not just from the perspective of individual children who may need their services, but the perspective of all children, who at times during their lives need some support. And in the interest of all children, being able to learn in classrooms where the children have some significant issues, particularly behavioral issues, may be a challenge to the learning of others or to, to teachers. So I think they are a high priority for that, for that reason. So I guess I would say that would be, on this list anyway, the next priority for starting next year's budget.
All right. So we take amendments and reverse?
Can I just have a, just a quick comment about Ed's? I, I completely feel for you, because two years ago, I felt the same about large class sizes at PRS. And, and, you know, it took, I think, we might have had 50 or 60 parents in the audience that evening to let folks understand that we really had to do something about it. But I find that in May and then later on, there, there seems to be an ability to figure things out without necessarily adding another teacher. And this is easy to say, if this was a different year than this year, I'd probably be supporting what you're suggesting, because I understand and agree with it. This is a tough year because of all the things that are going on that are school-related. So for me personally, I think it's, it's something that I wouldn't support adding the additional person, but to the extent it can be worked out within the numbers as they fall, that, that would be my hope, certainly, because I understand your point.
I can also say that there may be more changes in this budget, hopefully all in a positive direction, not a negative one. March 1st is the date the teachers need to tell us whether they're coming back from a leave, for example. We haven't heard from all of those teachers, even though we've been beating the bushes and making phone calls and so on. We haven't heard from them all. So, you know, is there a possibility that there could be some other savings? So that if we really got in a crunch, as you are concerned particularly about that K to one, perhaps there are some other resources that could be brought, made available. Also, even though we say 4.0 FTEs, secondary, and one at elementary, those numbers really are total of five. And when we sit down, Ellen and I, we make no commitments. We go and we're the secondary people, and we ask what they need, and they have to show us that the class sizes will be and what might have to be cut if they didn't have staffing. We go and meet with the four elementary principals all together. Everybody puts all their cards on the table, what they know about who's coming and going. And then we make the decisions about where those five go. So we've had years when we've felt that some of the resources that we had thought we were going to use at the secondary level actually get used at the elementary level. For example, we need another kindergarten. You know, it's a bigger kindergarten enrollment than we thought. So we make choices that are across the district as well as just within the level.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Again, the only comment I would have is that in regard to, you know, and thankfully we've had this half a million dollars plus worth of reductions due to various, various situations. But, you know, it's, at some point, it, it seems to me that, you know, we're, again, we had another 19,000 some odd dollars now, you know, that if, if that's an, if the number that we're talking about, plus 19,000, whatever dollars it is, is an affordable number, I would, I don't know, again, to perhaps Carol's point and others that have talked about it, looking at that list of, of other needs, you know, you have a few things on there that are very low-cost. And again, these are clear, not things we're making up, you know, while there's more money around. You know, you're talking about the, you know, $5,000 to put additional tutor hours in the transition program. You're talking about under $5,000 to, for power educators and the high school health program and so forth. And/or, I don't know, you're talking about 2.25 adjustment counselors. You know, does it make any sense to restore a .25, which is about 15,000 or 20,000 dollars? So I'm just wondering, you know, and again, I'm, obviously hadn't thought a lot about this beforehand, because I'm hearing about this now, if there's any sense on, on the committee here that we should be looking at redeploying that money that we have as a savings to, to try to do something else here that clearly was identified. We, again, we're trying to, to not ask for the moon, and I don't think we're talking about that for another 19,000 or 20,000 dollars. So I, I would be interested to hear if anyone else has a thought about whether we should take the money that, the additional savings that happened the last few hours, and there may and will be savings, and there may not, maybe, may go the other way. And so we may not be able to do everything we want. If there's any thought to try to deploy that, those funds to do, to address any of these other needs that were identified, but we were not able, we didn't feel, you know, we could put into the budget before.
I'd like to speak. You know, I, I think that a lot of work has gone into getting to where we're at right now. And although it would be great to, to do that, I, I, I feel like it will not be looked upon in the best light at this point. So personally, I'm, I'm good with where we're at with the budget that's been recommended. Do we need to take a vote on-
No, what we're gonna do now is vote on Ed's amendment. So we have the amendment, we have a second. All in favor?
Voting Ed's, okay.
Additional 53-806. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'd hate to do that to you, but you're a good guy. Back to the original motion made by Ray. We have a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Gallo, John, Ellen, the principals, Liz, I know how much time and energy and effort you have put into this budget season. We all appreciate it. The town appreciates it. The students appreciate it. Your staffs appreciate it. Thank you. It's not over yet, though.
No.
Okay.
So what we have here is kind of a recap on the capital, and, and as you know, and you know, but folks in the audience don't all know, that the capital process goes a different route. That the Long Range Planning Committee of the school committee works together with John and comes up with a list of needs. They propose those to the Capital Outlay Committee, which is a separate committee from the advisory committee, although Mr. Piles, who's here, represents both groups. So we present to them, and they, they do a terrific job. They probably have the hardest job of anyone in that they're given a certain number of dollars to work with. And this year, we had more than $4 million, I think it was, in requests that came in, and they ended up with maybe $2 million to, to spend. And so it's a constant exercise in cutting. But anyway, the, the history here is that on January 9th, we met with Capital Outlay, and at that point, the request was for $1.267 million. And those were things like repairs to buildings, like repairs to operating systems, like things like technology needs. Many infrastructure things that perhaps don't show up for teachers or for students or for parents, but nevertheless are important to keep buildings running. So there was some discussion and redistribution in an effort to reduce that number, sensitive to the fact that there are limited capital dollars that are available to be allocated. And so as of January 24th, that figure was 790,334. Most of the things that were reduced for the year we're in were simply moved forward to another year. And of course, you can see what would happen over time, that if we did that every year, and we've been doing that every year, you create that backlog that Carol mentioned. So there was some further redistribution with the Long Range Planning Subcommittee, and on January 30th, the budget was at 660,734. And again, most of the things that were reduced moved into the next year. The town has a five-year capital plan, and so we move things from one year to the next. Then there was a capital outlay meeting where several members of the school committee attended, and where there was a suggestion there that with further prioritizing, that we remove the energy management system at the high school, which is about an $80,000 topics item. Some of these mechanical systems today, and the electronics and the technology that's involved, make them very, very costly, but necessary in building. And there's some renovations for our gatehouse, which is the, the little brick building over on Fort Hill Street where our bus transportation office is, and where Paul Fields Maintenance Office is as well. So those two things were reduced, and so we were at a budget of $550,000. So today, where we stand, and for your discussion, because this is new news to most of you, so as you discuss where we are and where you think we ought to be, and ultimately take a vote on a capital budget, there was a town hall proposal to reduce the school capital budget by an additional $50,000. Not with respect to specific items. We would work with the Long Range Planning Committee, John and that committee, to decide probably prior to the printing of the warrant, that makes it by mid-March, exactly where those reductions should come in the 550. And that would then give us a whole capital budget of a half million dollars, and that would then be part of that balanced budget that Carol mentioned, and was reported to us as a forecast this morning. So that's where we are. I think in understanding that 550 was what was recommended at the Slutman's meeting by Capital Outlay, but a suggestion from Town Hall, looking at the forecast and where the revenues are expected to be, that reducing that budget from 550 to 5, that 50,000, which we would look at carefully, won't tell you tonight what things come out of it, because we want to take some time, having just heard this today as to what they would be. But that would be then a proposal to you of 500,000 even for capital, and the 50 will tell you probably in about two or three weeks, because the information about the specific items for the capital budget and long-range planning and, and the five-year capital budget needs to be, as a document, in the town warrant.
All right. Any comments or questions in regard to that?
Just a question. So what, what was the recommendation for townwide capital?
The recommendation for townwide capital is 1, 1.9.
Of that number, 400 is coming from the user fees.
Okay, so 1.5 is the non-
It's like 1.4-ish, right?
Um.
It's this number plus these two, and that's-
So user rates and the mooring permits. The mooring permits are going to fund the new boat engine, the harbor master needs.
So the 1.4 or some-
Yes.
Yeah.
And then 420-ish.
So, so my, my only comment would be, and again, this is nothing new to either Capital Outlay or, or, and I think some people here, is, is that, you know, we have, we need to really address townwide how we deal with larger expenditures, that because, you know, as an example, here in the schools, you know, five years out, four or five years out, we're looking at a, potentially a million dollars to replace windows. You know, as sunny as Dr. Steller's disposition is, it, it makes it tough to get this light in those plexiglass windows that, that have been in the school for a long time. So I think it's, it's important to recognize that even with the, the $2 million going forward, ultimately we're gonna have to address townwide, whether it's through a debt service type situation, and funding that debt service, you know, through the operating budget or whatever, that two, even $2 million is probably not gonna be adequate to meet some of our longer-term needs.
Well, and I think there is a group that is going to set up to look at that, and-
Yeah, it's a great point. I mean, if you look in there, out a few years, the fire department has the replacement of the quint in there for almost 900 grand. In my estimation, that's not something should be coming out of capital.
Capital.
It should be an article at town meeting, just like when we asked for $600,000- It should be an article at town meeting, just like when we asked for six hundred thousand dollars for the track and were summarily dismissed.
Or again, you know, borrow a million dollars and pay the debt service on it over X number of years.
I think it's a discussion that has to happen.
Exactly.
Outside of this group.
So in that context, you know, obviously, I think the original was two point four million. It's down to one point five million, call it for the sake of discussion. Us to, you know, give another fifty thousand dollars or so beyond, you know, again, figuring out where that is, I can live with it personally.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that the school committee supports all the hard work that John Ferris and the administration have done and get in our capital request to five hundred thousand.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
Is it five hundred even, or is it this?
Don't read all my little notes, because I was scribbling. But it's five hundred thousand.
Is it this number? Five hundred thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars.
Was our original request five hundred and fifty, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars?
Yeah. It went from six sixty, seven thirty-four in capital to five fifty even, but the schedule still shows the dollars.
Something went down a hundred and ten, wasn't it, Andy, the two items?
Yeah, it went down a hundred. So we were...
Was it even?
Was it even?
It was six sixty, seven three four, and then the hundred and ten thousand was an even hundred and ten thousand, because it was thirty thousand for the gatehouse and eighty thousand for the other E M system.
So five fifty, seven three four, which means it should be five hundred, seven three four, which is what that's...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that.
So you want to amend that motion, Andy?
So I concur. The amount should be five hundred thousand, seven thirty-four.
Okay, we have a second?
Second to that?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
Thank you. I will say, you know, despite the fact that these aren't where we wanted them, I think this is a very comfortable budget for us, and I think the exercise, while it's sometimes painful to put in things and then have to take them out, I think the exercise is worth that for making the needs clear and gives us a good starting point for another year.
I do, too. Okay, six point three, to act in post-fees for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen integrated pre-K and extended day K programs, as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Okay. So we met on February thirteenth, and we had a very full agenda, which I'll discuss later, but we had some fees to talk about and make a recommendation to this board. We are actually today just talking about the preschool and extended day kindergarten fee. And the administration recommended a two percent increase. These fees go to offset para hours. And during our conversation about that two percent increase, a question was asked about whether that covers all of the increases of the paras. And in fact, there are a few steps that the paras have as part of their contract. So we discussed that we thought a two point five percent increase would be a more appropriate increase for the fees. So that is our recommendation to the committee, it was unanimous vote.
Okay, so do we need a motion to...
Doc, do we usually, do we, a motion on this?
Yeah, usually make a motion in a second and then discuss questions.
So I'll make a motion that we increase the pre-K and extended day kindergarten fees by two point five percent.
Want a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just the clarification is it's rounded to the nearest five dollars.
Good point, yes, it is.
Okay.
So that's why you see a two point seven, and a two point seven, and a two point, and the other two point fives is that we're rounding.
Okay, I like that.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just let the record reflect, I abstain.
Okay, six point four is to review and discuss updated information concerning the high school fields project, including drainage permitting, concession building design, project budget, and the other matters as may emerge within forty-eight hours. Actually, right now, at eight o'clock, we're being represented in front of CONCOM in regard to the improved drainage. I'm pretty sure all of you know Roger Fernandez met with the Gale engineers out at Union Street. They dug some test pits, determined that the roof and main parking lot of the high school drain into the field's drainage system, which is really what's causing a lot of the drainage issues. So Gale and Roger Fernandez came together, have developed a solution to that problem. It's relatively inexpensive. As you know, Roger has it scheduled to repave Union Street. So when he does that, we will be digging up, and I actually know a lot more about pipes than I ever thought I would. Right now, our drainage from the high school comes out in a thirty-inch pipe, goes to a twenty-four-inch pipe under Union, and then, yeah, which is inverted, and then drains out to another thirty-inch pipe across the street. So we're going to be removing the twenty-four-inch pipe, replacing it with a thirty-inch plastic pipe, which flows faster, has better surface conduit or something, and should fix that drainage problem. So those plans are being developed, tested, and presented back to planning and CONCOM, and then we should be good to go.
So do you know exactly the difference in the coefficient of friction between the metal?
I do, I have all those mathematical things on a piece of paper.
It's a really interesting thing, because the current pipe is made of concrete. And so while the outside circumference is thirty inches, its thickness makes the inside twenty-four inches. Whereas you replace it with PVC, the whole thing, the opening's thirty.
There you go. So that's all good news. I think that's all good news, and we are getting ready to go out to bid on that project. So we will have real numbers when we move forward to town meeting. It won't be in time for the printing of the official warrant. We will need to do a supplement warrant. And I think that's all I have to do right now, as far as the drainage. Andy, I know you have some items for us to discuss.
Are you ready for me?
Yep.
Okay. So first of all, there's a group of concerned citizens for the Hingham Green Project, the Fields Project, that's been very active in fundraising. As many of you know, we talked about this at the last meeting, it's been, it was also, it was also published in the Hingham Journal, so thank you Carol Britton Meyer for making a good plug for it, but there's a first fundraiser this Saturday night. They're expecting five hundred people there, so it's going to be a very good event. There's two parts to the event. The first thing is for everyone to gather and then to learn more about the project, because although there's been a lot of meetings, not everyone knows what the fine details are. And then secondly, there is going to be a fundraising opportunity where people can donate a seat. We discussed this at the last school committee meeting, and we approved the donation of two hundred and fifty dollars per seat. So that will be the main fundraiser there. We will have a flyer out so that everyone knows where to send the check, the form, and all that stuff. Mainly it's going to come to John Ferris here at the school administrative building. The second thing that we've discussed with the friends of the Field Project is basically levels of donors. And one thing that we talked about briefly last time was what kind of donor we would have. And what I'd like you guys to strongly consider and think about, and if so, approve tonight, basically four levels of donors. One would be gold, one would be silver, one would be bronze, and then the other one would be donors. And so the levels would be fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand, five thousand. And what we do here is, we don't know exactly how we, especially in this short notice, how we're going to be able to recognize everyone. What we would like to commit to is creating a donor circle, a donor wall, some sort of donor plaque. In the stuff that Gale Associates gave us on Slide nine of Alternative Ways to Finance, there was an illustration of like a bunch of pavers and benches. And so one thought that came up is maybe we do something around that, like around the flagpole. So we'll have just one general section. So the two things that we would like to discuss on the fundraising is the first, what kind of level of the donors, and then the second is an area where we'd recognize all the donors. The other thing is, and if we want to get into it, we do have suggested levels on other types of donations where people would have a plaque, whether it's a scoreboard, a flagpole, batting cage, restrooms, toilets. I have an extensive list here that we can go through, or otherwise we can just focus on those first two items, Carol.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions in regard to the levels of donors?
I have a question.
Yes.
So what is the objective, the fundraising objective of this group?
How much money? You mean for this Saturday night, or just in general?
No, no, in general. I mean, that's what we're, oh, so we're talking about the levels of donors that are sort of across the board? We're not...
Well, I think, I mean, obviously, we've stated in the paper how much the proposed project is. We've always stated clearly that this would be, we are going to try and solicit private funds. And I think if we could get in the range of five hundred thousand or up, I think that would be a great contribution from the citizens of Hingham, because they're also, if you think about it, we're also paying this with our tax dollars.
I know.
So if you can get something in that ten to twenty percent coming from the private source, I think that'd be a wonderful start.
Okay, so that's five hundred thousand.
That would be a good target, yes.
Has the group discussed this?
Yes, we've discussed, the group has discussed it. Obviously, we'd like to do more, but sometimes, especially when I'm on TV here and I'll look right in the camera, that it's better to possibly, what's the phrase?
Be conservative.
Be conservative or to under-promise and over-deliver. And so...
It's a Dennis phrase, I think.
So I think on this one, we'd like to...
Trademark that.
So I think we'd like to do that. But I think here's what the interesting thing is, Carol, to your point. There's a lot of generous people out there. There's a lot of people committed to this project. We have to make sure this passes at town meeting, and then hopefully, everything will really open up the spigots. But to answer your question, a conservative goal would be five hundred thousand, and hopefully, we could do more than that.
I have a question. Logistically, how will this work? This is, we're not anticipating having all this money before town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because logistically, we're supposedly, we're, there's a group that's putting together a sum of money which will be private funds, and the town is going to cover X money, you know, and the cost of the project might be Y. So it's Y minus X is the private funds. So this is in addition to that money?
This is a part of that group also.
Well, I know it's part of the group, but in terms of the funds themselves.
I don't understand. So explain the question to me.
Are you saying, is this five hundred thousand dollars in addition to that, or part of that?
My understanding is we have to, we have to be, we have to come to town meeting, and frankly, way before town meeting, with a commitment of a particular dollar amount from private sources.
Right.
In order to supplement the cost of the project. So this is separate from that, or part of that dollar amount?
This is part of that dollar amount.
Okay.
So are they signing, are people signing pledges?
Yeah.
So with a person that's donating fifty thousand, they're signing a pledge?
We're not getting that formal into pledges, because, I mean, there's people who are committing to us.
Yeah.
And a lot of this is also subject to the approval of town meeting.
Right.
But we're taking people on their word that if they're going to commit to it, they're going to pay it, and we're not...
Could I suggest that you have a pledge that could be contingent upon the vote at town meeting? So that there's some writing?
Right, my only concern is that, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is that the town side is going to be looking for some sort of commitment in writing from those who would donate private funds, because we're going to have, I don't know what the number will be for the ultimate cost, but I believe it'll be more than what we've been led to believe the town is willing to pay for. So, and I think it goes back to the town meeting warrant from eleven, where it said a written memorandum of understanding. I don't know exactly what form it would take, what would be in that, but I think there are some people who are going to look for written commitments. I agree with you that, you know, you don't want to scare anybody off, you don't want to hold people's feet to the fire, but at the same time, I think logistically...
Well, I think somebody who's willing to donate twenty thousand or fifty thousand dollars is a type of person who is used to having, making some kind of a commitment, I might be. It's not like you're going to scare off somebody who's...
Sure. I mean, I'll definitely go back and talk to the people about that and coordinate.
I think that just might make the whole process...
We've also, going back to Ray's point, I mean, we've had discussions, sorry, just meant to talk away from you, is we've also had discussions with Ted and the funding of the part, because even people will be, what I was led to believe is that the way Ted was going to take the money in, people almost had fourteen months to make a pledge. Even if you were going to commit a very generous amount like that, twenty-five thousand, in theory, you could make that over a fourteen-month period.
Right.
And Ted would accept those monies in that way.
Correct, and that might be fine, but that would all be within your pledge. You might have those terms spelled out.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, I pledge to give twenty-five thousand dollars, five thousand on, you know, December first, five thousand on May first, and that way, he maybe can use that for whatever funding or borrowing he's doing as well.
Sure, I have no problem going back to...
I don't think we're talking about the two hundred and fifty dollar seat situation.
No, I have no problem going back and asking for a commitment letter, because I will, everything's going to be the chicken or the egg. People are going to want, some people might want to see the money in the bank even before the project goes to the town meeting.
The town will.
Yeah, and so that's, those are the tricky things, but also, I like to take people on their word.
Absolutely.
You know, and so...
But we can't bond a project on...
Well, I think there's something to be said for just making sure that everybody's understanding is the same.
Yeah.
That the money is expected by X date and in those kinds of things.
And a pledge would set those terms out.
All right, so let's get back to what Andy is asking us. Is everybody comfortable with the donor levels? Is this, and I'm assuming that you've discussed this in...
Yes.
Okay, Hingham Sports Partnership?
And the green, the green project group, the...
Okay.
And you're looking for multi-donors at these levels?
Well, first, the first thing is, here's what Carol's talking about, is the actual levels, the gold, silver, and bronze.
Right.
So...
No, I'm fine with it. Just to clarify, so donor under five thousand, it could be any amount under five thousand.
Correct.
Just because you mentioned generous, there are a lot of folks, and there's big-ticket items on here, right? There are a lot of folks who couldn't afford a big-ticket item like this, who are also generous and would give whatever they have, but it might not be a five-figure number.
Let me be clear, anyone who donates, I think is generous. So if I, if I did say that clearly, anyone who donates to this project...
Just all the zeros might scare people off, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, no, so I think the thing is, I think this donate a seat campaign, just from my personal point of view, since it's, since we are going to have these bleachers, and it's going to be like fifteen hundred people in the main stadium, and then, of course, we have the visitors...
It's not a stadium.
Or, excuse me, bleachers. I said the word bleachers first. I think this is a really neat way for people to get involved. And that's like why we'll definitely have a plaque there for people who donate a seat.
Okay. So I'd like to have a motion.
Can I just ask one question? Just can you give me the thinking on the bronze being five thousand and not ten thousand?
It was just a recommendation, someone said five thousand, and I didn't, I mean, I'll be happy to raise that to ten thousand.
No, I'm just curious if there was some discussion about that.
A lot of this, a lot of the input I got back from people was, this was what similar towns did, whether it was the Cohasset Project or something down in Hanover.
You can make it ten, and then this could be five.
You know, and that's really what came about. I mean, it wasn't, people came, gave me a level, and so...
Carol, you know, I like that. If you did bronze, ten thousand, and then donor...
It just seemed like a big jump between twenty-five and five.
Make donor five and under.
Well, you can, I mean, if you want, we can actually add a fifth level of friends, supporters, anything like that. Because if you want to go with bronze to ten, and then friends at five thousand, and supporters, everything under that?
No, because I think the donate a seat, that two fifty, I guess.
I guess I'm not clear on the, so the idea is that if you contribute twenty-five thousand dollars or more, you might have a plaque on something specific, and you might also have your name on this.
Great clarification, Dennis. So hypothetically, if you give twenty-five thousand for a scoreboard, you will get, you'll be recognized hopefully in two areas. One is on this donor circle, under the silver, and then also something by the scoreboard. The reason, and this is very important, the reason why I need to have this donor circle, donor wall, donor plaque, similar to what we've seen here in this picture here, is based on all the rules and regulations of the town. This is the thing I can guarantee. I don't know exactly how everything's going to work out, you know, where it's going to show up and the other stuff, so my goal is to have it, if you were to give twenty-five thousand for a scoreboard, you're going to get recognized under the silver, and then something by a scoreboard.
Right, so, so if that's the case, I think what I'm hearing is that on this donor plaque, or round, or whatever we're gonna call it, there could, there doesn't need to be just three levels, or four levels, or whatever. I, I would, I'm thinking that perhaps, as other people have just suggested, gold, if that's 50,000, silver's 25, bronze might be 10, there might be a five, a 1 to 5,000, I mean, a 5 to 10, or a 1 to 5, or something, you know, to give people an opportunity, because all the rest of these down here are relatively large, with the exception of the seat piece. So, you know, if you wanna encourage people to give in that, you know, 1 to 5,000 dollar category, or the 5 to 10,000, you know, we might wanna just have further categories. I don't, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't have any particular expertise in that area, but I've seen, you know, in other areas, places that I've been to, you give, you know, different, with more categories, and probably wouldn't be anything less than, say, a thousand dollars, you know.
And Carol, the only thing I could suggest on that is, we can start off with this level, this four-tier approach here, and based on what we actually get back, we can, I can always come back and modify and say, we have X number of these donors, X number of these, Y of these, if you want to modify it.
Well, looking at your list, you don't have a lot of 5,000 dollar items, right?
No. But some people, but here's the goal. Let me just back up on one thing. One thing about the donate the seat campaign, one thing we talked about at length there was, like, I have four children. So, maybe I'll do four seats. Maybe someone will wanna do 10 seats, so then they could get up into those kinda categories, if they want to do multiple seats. And just because I donate, you know, three or four seats, it doesn't mean that they have to, you know, maybe I'll just go as Andy Schaffter won, or the Schaffter family. Or I could just go as anonymous. So, people don't have to be recognized. There's a lot of people out there who would just like to contribute to the project, and just be anonymous, or friend.
Yeah, for sure.
But, but Dennis, you're more than welcome to sign up for 20 seats.
I was thinking of a whole section. Do you have a discount for a whole section?
There's 208 people in the section right in front of the press box. I know that, just 'cause we happened to ask Gail.
All right, so just bear with me. I know this is painful. So, if we were to do donor, and make it 1,000 to 4, that goes under 2. I mean, that would be 9,999, right? 9,999. Bronze would be 10,000 to 24,999. Silver is 25,000 to 4999, and then gold is 50,000 and above. Does that, does that work for everybody?
Can you just re, re, so you're gonna have gold at, from...
50,000 and above.
And silver, and then bronze is starting at 10,000?
Silver 25,000 to 4999.
Okay, oh, and then donor, and then donor is from 1,000 to 9,990?
Right.
Gotcha.
The donate the seat program is 250 each.
So, they would no longer be considered a donor?
So, what you're saying...
A donor wouldn't be like zinc, or copper, or something like that?
Well, it's my understanding that you're gonna, they're gonna do seat donors and do a plaque.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna try to recognize the people as best as we can. Unfortunately, we're not professional, I mean, we have to get, you know, get everything...
We aren't professional fundraisers.
Right, so...
All right, underneath, we have a whole list of items. Now, Andy, I'm assuming these items you received from Gail, with there's, these suggested numbers here, based upon experience that they've seen in other fields.
It wasn't from Gail, it was from people from, like, Hingham Sports Partnership, and they had coordinated with, like, Cohasset, on what they did at Cohasset.
So, there's some research to back up these numbers?
And some of the things came in lower than what actually the cost was. So, like, for example, the batting cage, someone had said, the original came in at 10,000, but when I went and looked at the batting cage cost, it was 20,000, so I adjusted it up to the price.
So, what, what about the entire complex amount?
The...
When you say, what do you mean by entire complex? You mean the multipurpose field, or you mean the multipurpose? I would go for a higher amount of money.
Again, remember, nothing is named after anyone.
I understand that.
It would just be a plot, acknowledgement saying...
Donated by...
That the entire complex donated by Carol M. Falvey.
Can we spell that one with a Y? Okay. Entire, entire complex, I'm, I'm reading as the multipurpose field, which came in at 991,000 dollars.
So, maybe we should say that, instead of saying entire complex.
Because we also have the multi-use facility, main field, up on the number one, first one.
It's in front of me.
So, I mean, I have no problem.
I think...
Multi, okay, so you, that's what you're intending as multipurpose field?
Yes.
So, would that be a million dollars?
Well, we're hoping to get multiple people. If you think it's redundant, I'll take one out.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's no conditioning on, not, you're not saying that one person has to donate the full amount.
What I think also is gonna happen, Carol, is, like, when I was saying that this part, I'm not, like, so worried about, like, finalizing all these, dotting the i's, crossing the t's here, is because people who are gonna make large donations tend to have a love of something that they, they wanna do. And remember, I think some of these donations, based on our own school policy, over X amount, we're supposed to accept it here. So, that's why anything, anyone who comes in and says they'd like to do this, you know, I'm gonna, it's gonna come back in front of the school committee and say, um...
Will we accept it?
Yeah, Carol and Paul Falvey would like to donate 20,000 dollars for the baseball scoreboard. Do we accept, do we accept the donation?
I would choose the Harbor Woman statue.
I think that's a, an idea. And the other thing I would need help with is the toilets, apparently at the Hingham Public Library.
Well, those are the family, like, the family...
Okay.
Can we have a unisex statue?
They donate a toilet.
Yeah, so, those are very popular.
Okay, all right, so, I mean, I'm assuming, does anybody have any gut reactions to these numbers?
Just a, just a question about the entire complex, the million. If someone's gonna give that much money, I mean, I guess some people do care, but maybe they wouldn't care about having their name on something, but rather, we create a special level at the top? Benefactor, or something like that?
Anything over, anything over, anything over half a million dollars?
And the people in the audience have their mouths open. They're looking at us like, I can't believe you're talking about this money like it's nothing, and I'm trying not to, because it's jumping out at me too.
Listen, well, you heard my goal on, on what we're trying to get. I mean, I don't know what people have, but you gotta also remember...
Try to defray the cost to the taxpayer, ultimately.
But that's, but also, Ray, if we start this process now,
Yeah.
This is not something that's gonna happen overnight, but maybe in 10 years down the road, someone's gonna wanna make a donation, and then, you know, that's gonna be able to help do other things.
And that's one other question I had, just, you've got a couple things listed here that have already been constructed and paid for in other ways. How would we, where would that money go? For instance, the tennis courts.
Right.
You know, yes, we did get some grant money, we did get, you know, some donated money, but ultimately, it was the town that paid for...
Well, this is phase two of the project. So, to me, that money...
No, but nothing else is being done to the track or the tennis court.
I think, I think that'll look at it a different way, Ray. This is a way to recognize people who would like to make donations. Frankly, if somebody would like to give us money for the cafeteria at the high school, I have no problem putting out a plaque by the cafeteria at the high school, if somebody gave us 25,000 dollars.
No, I, I get that. And if I could just look at it my way, for just one second.
Yeah, sure.
Right, to answer your question.
No, my only point is, if someone gives us money, I have no problem recognizing them, okay? If someone gives us money for something that's already been paid for by the taxpayer, if I were the taxpayer, and I am, I might be saying, hey, wait a minute, where's that money going that someone just gave you? Shouldn't that come back to the town? That's, someone may ask that question, so I pose it to you.
I think, I think that's just, that's just, we cross that bridge when we get there, really.
So, to answer your question, Ray, it's one of two things. It either goes into our, our general field revolving fund, for future maintenance that we'll pay out of our fund, because remember, the tennis courts, we're gonna need new tennis courts in about six years. Five to six years, 'cause we just put a band-aid on them. But the second thing, or the second thing is...
Is that in the capitals?
Seven to 10.
Seven to 10, excuse me. Uh, or the second thing is, that is part of the money that we use to off, to lower our costs, as part of the, the goal to lower the...
That would be a great problem. I think you guys, you know, let's not focus on that. That's not, it's a great problem to have. Hopefully, we'll have it in the future, right? If someone came along and said, here's, here's 10,000 dollars, you know, buy some nets for the tennis courts, and use the rest to help finish the, um, you know, something at the fieldhouse, that would be great. So, let's cross that bridge when we get to it. Let's look at these numbers. Anybody, I mean, my gut reaction, they look fine to me. If you, if you need marching orders tonight, I'd be more than willing to take a motion and, and move forward on that. With the clarification of the entire complex being revisited to the multipurpose field...
Right, I'm gonna scratch that to, just to have the top line, the multi-use facility main field.
Okay. Any other comments?
But with the objective that you're trying to reach, you're, you're just saying, so, if anybody donated 250 would be recognized on that? 'Cause I, I wouldn't want one person to be acknowledged for 250 for the whole multipurpose field. That, to me, wouldn't be enough. You know what I'm saying? Like, back down below where you said a million? I think a million should be the objective, so, you know, a consortium of people should come together to get to that one million.
So, it can either be four people, totally a million, or...
It could be whatever, it could be 10 people giving 100.
Gotcha.
I think a million is what we want for the multipurpose field.
Okay, so, has to be a minimum of a million. I'm just shooting for 500.
Yeah, doesn't have to be. Okay.
Okay.
Then the other part on the, the back is, um, I think there could be some exciting things going. It's just my opinion, when people talk about landscaping, there's some sort of affinity to donate a tree, or some sort of shrub. I have to get more information from Gail on what that finalized plan would be. And then also, there's gonna be some sort of hardscape, which I define as bricks and pathway, you know, major stones, which, again, I think could be interesting stuff. So, those are things I'd like to come back to when we have more insight on that.
Great.
But again, I think, Carol, and the rest of my fellow school committee members, I cannot thank the excitement from the people who are behind the project in the town who are trying to actively help to defray the cost to the town. And I do think that anyone who wants to get involved, this donate a seat campaign, I think would be great in this, especially if we could get all 2,000 of the seats donated. That's, that gets us up to that 500,000.
It'd be wonderful.
And I guess the one thing is, do, can I, who needs permission? Do I authorize John to start talking to Gail to help us with designs of a donor circle, donor wall? 'Cause we need to have some, we need some sort of illustration of where they wanna put that on the project.
Why don't you take that under the building concession?
Okay.
Do we have an update on the building? How's that going?
Sure.
Thank you for...
We're, we're meeting again Wednesday morning at 7:00. We, uh, things moved well, I think, last time. We made some decisions, asked them to come back and show us three different roof lines, which will not only allow us to get a better visual of what it'll look like from the street, but also enable us to make a decision on how much storage we could ultimately have on the second floor. We did make a decision, and I think it's a good decision, to make it a year-round building, so that when it's 30 degrees one Thanksgiving, and cold, instead of this past, which was 60 degrees, folks can use the bathroom, and it won't be freezing. Because there was some discussion about not doing that, and we, we came to the conclusion that it was a valuable decision to make. So, I think it's coming along nicely. I think the initial design Gail has given us are, are good ones. They've made some adjustments, adjustments to the layout, which will enable us to maximize the space on the first floor, having storage, concession space, and bathrooms, also enabling a bathroom for each gender to be available separate from the rest of the bathrooms, so a single bathroom for each gender can be made available to the public, separate from the other ones, enclosed off, not during big events. So, for a weekend or something, you know, so someone can get in and use the bathroom. And, uh, but otherwise, I think it's coming along nicely, and we should be close to finished, I think.
So, so when you, when you say the building will be year-round, but in the off-season, it can be winterized and kinda shut down?
Insulated and heated, so that it...
It'll be heated, heated year-round?
Well, you, you, you would, you would lower the heat to the... Yeah, so the pipes don't freeze, okay? Just an example, Lynch Field, okay? That building is not a year-round building. So, someone has to come in, in November, when the football teams are done, and drain all the pipes, and put fluid in them, so it doesn't freeze. That does not have heat, not even a 55 degrees, so that would get down into the 20s, and everything would freeze if it wasn't drained and winterized. What we're proposing is a building that actually is insulated and heated, but you drop it down to a level during the off months that is just enough, so things don't freeze.
Okay, great. Anything else in regard to the Fields project?
Just, just, if you, have you, you have a comment on that?
I was just gonna comment with respect to the concession building. I do owe a letter to the plumbing board that affirms the fact that we did make the commitment that we would keep the building open, the laboratories in the building, available during large events.
Okay.
So, um, I have to write that letter. I'll give you all a copy, but it is a commitment we made, so when you get the letter, that's the reason for...
Don't be surprised.
Telling us, telling them we're gonna keep bathrooms open.
We should have a bathroom party.
Did you have...
Yes, yes, the only other comment I had was that, since there's been some discussion around about the, the cost of the facilities and so forth, the whole Fields project, I think it's important, since we have a fairly large crowd here tonight, that, that to recognize that, you know, while the pricing has gone higher than what was estimated at last year's town meeting, most of that differential comes from the fact that we're putting close to 600 to 700,000 dollars into parking, which was not required by the parking study. It was decided town-wide that that was a good thing to do for the neighbors and for other needs. And also, the concession building that we've talked about is gonna be probably in the area of 500,000 dollars. We don't know yet, but we, we're estimating. So, if you look, if you look at those two things, come to about 1.2 million dollars. And if you look at the difference between the roughly 2.7, we thought it might be, and the roughly 4 million that we, that we're looking at now, and we don't, we don't know for sure, it's not as huge a difference as it, it might just appear, somebody looking, oh, my God, where, where did that extra million some odd dollars? So, I think it's important for you to recognize that, and obviously, as you say, for town meeting, we'll know exactly the numbers and be able to explain it to everybody.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Up, up, that's good, that's okay. We love to have them.
My name's Michelle Grady. I'm a parent of a teacher, of, of some students. I thought that, and this is my, I'm just trying to educate myself on the whole process. I thought I had read in the paper that the new budget was 6 million dollars. Is that, is that my misunderstanding? So, it's...
Yeah, it's closer to, um, I just looked at some numbers the other day. It, right now, it's estimated, it's only estimated at, um, which is, you know, our engineer's best guess.
Okay.
At about 4.7.
Okay.
Um, and then when we send that out to bid, we'll get real numbers in, and typically, um, we've worked with Gail in the past. It comes in a little less than what they estimate, so...
Okay.
That's why we're working so hard on getting some private funding to help us lower that cost.
Okay, well, it's, it's more palatable at that number than six, so, thank you.
It was never six, or anything approaching it.
Okay, I don't know where I heard that, then.
And just, just to give you a frame of reference, Carol's exactly right. When you look at cost estimates and actual bid figures, just, just a frame of reference on the middle school, if you recall, the cost estimates, the latest cost estimates, which were good, solid cost estimates, right before bid, um, you know, were X, and then the bids came in 2.5 million below X. So, anything can happen with, with an active bidding climate.
And it's active. I made sure of that. Okay. Any other questions, comments, that? No, okay. 6.5 is to review a draft of the school department annual report for the annual town report.
Yes, all of the town departments and committees and... Committees and appointed groups and so on are asked to write a written report that becomes part of the Hingham annual town report, in this case, for the calendar year 2012. And so, typically, I write that, but since your names appear on it at the end, I'd like to see what I've written. It's followed a similar template, if you will, from prior years. And while there's a lot more we can write, there actually is a lot there. When you see it, it takes up a lot of pages. So, um, this is a draft, and right on the first page immediately, in the third paragraph, that should be 2012. But I did send this around to you last night. I did get, um... in the third paragraph, that should be two thousand twelve. But I did send this around to you last night. I did get a good comment from, from Dennis. And actually, the paragraph that is, the next-to-last paragraph on the first page, it came as a result of Dennis's suggestion. There is still a missing piece. I did send what Margaret wrote last year, and asked her to update it for this year. I still have that as of today. And there's a space for that on the third page. But I really would like to get this turned over to Betty Towel, who organizes it, gets it ready for the printing process. So I'd really like to get that to her tomorrow, or at worst on Wednesday. So let me know if you have any other editing suggestions. There actually are a couple that Ellen found. And yeah, strictly editing, so I will clean those up, but any of your input is welcome. Also, let me know if you're unhappy with anything being here, because your, your name is attached to it. It says the annual report in public news, but the sign out is by a school committee.
Any suggestions, if any, by when, in terms of turning?
Well, preferably tomorrow, because it really was due last Tuesday, but we didn't have an opportunity to have a meeting, so you could see it, but.
So no pressure, Ed, tomorrow.
I think it's fair to say, too, that if you read it again next week, and you find something that hasn't gone to print, it's easy to make a change.
This is going to be part of the warrant, that this goes in?
No, it's not the warrant. There's a different thing in the warrant, although the thing in the warrant, I use a lot of this information. This is the annual report clip behind you on the second shelf there.
Exactly.
It appears in there. Ray had to do one for the building committee, and anyone else, she is a committee.
I have more time than tomorrow, though.
Oh.
I talked to Betty this morning.
You have told what, Wednesday?
Don't.
Don't tell Ed, because then he'll wait.
Alright, so comments to dot by eleven, how's that?
AM, sure.
No, AM. Poor woman needs some sleep. Okay. To six point six, to receive notification of the appointment of Lisa Curry at Foster School. We welcome Lisa. We have an appointment of Marilyn Player as an administrative assistant.
I should say Marilyn was at the middle school, and then Marilyn went to spend some time at the middle school, and also some time as Margaret's secretary, replacing a person that Margaret only had for a few weeks, who was replacing a person that moved to become the department director's secretary. So anyway, now Marilyn Player has gone to the role that, she's replacing Kathy Campbell, who was the assistant to the.
Well, Margaret has to break somebody else's.
So Margaret has to break somebody in there, so.
If she gets enough experience, she can always go into the search business if she needs us.
Six point eight is to receive information regarding an overnight field trip.
Yeah, this is an annual request.
Stuko, do you need a vote on that one?
No, don't need a vote. Just let me know if there are questions that you might like to ask, or are you.
It's a great trip. I went on it myself many years ago. Any other items of which we're not aware? No, okay. Building committee report?
Yeah, just a quick one. Friday, the twenty-second, we had a topping-off ceremony. Carol was there with me, John was there, where we, we watched the contractors raise the final steel beam and attached it to the, I guess it's the south corner of the gym. It was neat to see. The beam was available. I made sure that everyone's name was on it, who didn't get a chance to sign it. So everyone is represented. We did have press. The Globe was, was represented there. Jack McCarthy, the executive director of the MSBA, was there. So there was a piece in The Globe online with some photos. There was something in the Patch today. And there would be something, I think, in the Journal as well. We sent in some photos. So that's good. The project is coming along great. We're right around on schedule. Little bit of a delay with the weather, we've had the last month or two, but right around on schedule, and either on or below budget, with about thirty-five percent of the money expended so far in the construction at that level. So things are going great.
Good. Any questions, or Ray? Alright, great. Any other subcommittee reports?
As I mentioned before, policy met on the thirteenth, and in addition to talking about the fees, we also have been reviewing, revising the Buildings and Grounds Use Agreement, which is a work in progress, and we will be meeting again on March.
Sixth.
Is it the sixth, I think?
Okay.
So we, we did that as well. And we'll also, at our next meeting, we'll have a proposal on Kids in Action fee, fees as well.
Okay, well, that's great. Superintendent's report?
Nothing. We do have matters for executive session.
Okay, so we do have reason to go to executive session. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategies related to collective bargaining with the following bargaining groups: the Administrators Association, HEA Unit B, bus drivers, custodians, and food service workers, the discussion of which, in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee.
Second.
And then we vote individually, so, Paul, if we just.
I also believe we'll be discussing strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel.
Okay.
Alright.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, everybody. That concludes our public session.